Hey stranger. It's nice to see you.
Okay, we are on, all right. I would like to call the -- to order the Select Board meeting of February 27th, 2024. I'm gonna briefly cover what's on our agenda for this evening. The first thing we're gonna actually do is go into executive session under purpose two, which is conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Selected town manager candidate Matt Cronellis and you can see Matt is not gonna be with us for the first item. At 7:20, we are scheduled to potentially vote to execute an appointment agreement with Matt. At 7:30, acting chair, me, have some comments on the Feb. 17 meeting. At 7:45, we'll move to public comment. At approximately 8 o'clock, we'll do select board liaison and town manager reports. 8:15, again approximately on these, vote on setting a special election date for the select board member vacancy. Next item is to vote to appoint new volunteer appointment subcommittee members. About 8:45, discussion and vote on Community Preservation Act, the CPA Study Committee. 9:15, vote to close the warrant for April Town meeting and then we'll go to discuss future agendas, approved meeting minutes, and then at approximately 10 o'clock, we will again go into executive session, this time under purpose three, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to 179 Pearl Street, Davenport versus the Town of Reading. So Karen, do you -- oh, I'm sorry.
Mark, can -- because some members are participating remotely, can you just identify who's participating remotely and who is physically present?
Yes, thanks everyone. So participating remotely, we have Carlo Baci and Karen Herrick, and in person, Chris Haley and Mark Doc. Karen, do you have a motion, please?
Yep, give me one second.
Mark, can I just say something real quick?
Sure, hang on one sec, go ahead Carlo.
I just want to apologize that I'm not there in person, sorry.
Thanks, no worries.
Okay, are we ready for motion?
Yes, please.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to GLC 30A S21A2 to conduct the strategy session in preparation for contract negotiations or to conduct contract negotiations with Matthew Cronellis, the selected candidate for appointment to the position of town manager, to invite Avery Glassfree and executive assistant Caitlin Nocella into the executive session and return to open session.
Thank you, sir second.
Second.
Thanks Chris. So we will do roll call vote on everything tonight, we'll specifically do a roll call here. So Carlo.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Chris. And Mark, yes. So we are moving to executive session. We are gonna ask you folks who are in the room to head out during that time. We'll be closing the doors. Folks who are online, you're gonna have to be put into the waiting room.
Return from executive session. The next item on our agenda is vote to execute employment agreement with Matt Cornelis for the position of town manager. We are not finished in negotiations quite yet, so we will not be having that that item tonight for discussion. Next item on the agenda is acting to your comments on 217 meeting. So I wanted to, I took some time to reflect on the meeting and I wanted to to share some feedback with with the board, with the community. A little unfortunate, we're not all four together physically, but it is what it is. So at the select board meeting on Saturday, February seventeenth, I think we accomplished quite a bit in finding a way to move ahead with selecting a town manager, Matt Cornelis. And Matt's already digging in and I think doing a nice job. Despite coming in with some very distinct opinions, we reached a compromise and consensus. And we did this while still trying to process the resignation of one of our members. However, we also had a very toxic exchange that has no place in a public meeting in general and in a select board meeting per our own policies that we all agreed and committed to. My colleague Chris Haley launched a personal attack against me, attempting to weaponize innuendo and conjecture, he attacked my integrity. This attack and lightly veiled claims are inaccurate, inappropriate, divisive, and insulting. No one as a member of this community should be subject to this type of attack by a fellow resident, especially in a public meeting, and particularly not a fellow board member. This board works as a group of elected members to move the town forward. We created and all agreed to a list of board ethics and protocols that I know we're all familiar with and I can't pass it to you all online, but I know Chris you're familiar with this one also. And I I want to read just a part of it publicly here. For the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the select board and between our select board and professional management, we, the members of the Redding Select Board, do hereby publicly commit ourselves collectively and individually to the following operational protocols. One, the select board will work together to represent the interests and needs all the residents in our community. Two, the select board will lead by example at all times to build trust. We agree to avoid words and actions that create a negative impression of an individual, the select board, or the town. While we encourage debate and differing points of view, we will speak with care and respect. Fellow board members, this didn't happen at our meeting on February seventeenth. Part of our job as explained by the commitment we all made in our ethics and protocols is to work together, to act as role models and to lead by example. Vilifying a member particularly based on innuendo and conjecture is the exact opposite of our commitment and directly against the ethics and protocols that we all agreed to, and it's just plain wrong. Whether we have four or five members, our job is to work together for the community. We may not agree on all topics, we need to work together to move the town forward. And particularly if we're to work together for a short period of time with just four members, this is absolutely paramount. Make no mistake, doing a good job representing the community is a really hard job. And the pressures of personal and work lives on top of that can turn this into a pressure cooker. That said, this town runs and thrives based on its volunteers. We need and want volunteers to feel welcomed and appreciated. Thank you to all of the hardworking volunteers in this town. I ask that going forward, we, the select board, support this vision and redouble our efforts to work together in a productive manner. Thank you. This is an open item for the board, so other members would like to speak? Chris?
Thanks, Mark. I just want to clarify a couple things as well. I spoke to Jackie on my way home on Friday, February sixteenth, and that call ended about 5:00 PM. We then had the 10:00 AM select board meeting that you just referenced the following morning. So at no point did I have time to process what I just heard, let alone alert the Attorney General's office. That has subsequently been corrected. I was forwarded an email this morning with an advertisement link to an alleged nonpartisan pact that claims Chris Haley went so far as to call Mark Doxer disgusting. That is unequivocally incorrect. I didn't use that language to you, Mark. I didn't call you disgusting, nor what I call any other individuals disgusting. In reality, what I said was, it's disgusting, absolutely disgusting, in reference to what was done to Jackie. I believe I made that abundantly clear, but apparently it wasn't. The following is a quote. "I will never forget the fear I felt while I was being threatened." Jackie McCarthy was threatened with having an open meeting law complaint filed against her and implicating her law license if she did not change her vote from Matt Cornelis to Matt Coogan. That's blackmail? That is extortion! And that is not allowed to happen here in Redding ever again. And nor will I sit here silent and allow that to fester in the background and not bring it forward and then just get attacked online and belittled for exactly exposing what took place here. It's blackmail extortion. It's never happening again. And that's all I'm going to say on this topic.
Other members? Karen?
Hmm, I just, I'm not... I don't know what to say. I agree we need to commit to our select board ethics and protocols and thank you for reminding us, Mark, that we need to set a good example for the rest of the community. And we're all volunteers and this community runs on volunteers and we cannot be attacking each other. So all of that, all of that was very accurate and well said. Thank you.
Carla?
Thank you. While I appreciate your comments, we know something happened. Jackie McCarthy is a hardworking, respected individual in this town who got elected two years ago. And for her to do what she did and how distraught she was that night, something happened. Do I know exactly what happened? No, I don't. But I know something happened. We all do. And I know beyond a shadow of a doubt, it wasn't me. And according to Chris, beyond a shadow of a doubt, it wasn't him. So that leaves two other members of the board that may or may not have had a hand in her leaving. Now, I don't have the answers and I'm not making accusations on any one person or a group of people, but we all know something happened. Someone like that doesn't just upend and quit, okay? It just doesn't happen. And I'm sure Jackie is distraught over it. But I have not spoken to her since that night. I reached out to make sure she was okay because she mentioned family and that was it. I've respected her privacy. So while I don't know what happened exactly, I know something bad happened. And we need to look into it as a board because this just can't sit. The public deserves better. You know, I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. I think I said what I had to say and hopefully it means something. But something happened and, you know, whether a full investigation needs to be had, I'm okay with because I know my conscience is clean, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, I think we move on to the next topic, which is public comment. Laura, could I ask, could you invite Matt to come back and join us as part one? Folks, if you would, how many people would like to speak? I guess is the first question. Three. Great. Okay. Well, I think we can just start very simply. So why don't we do that and then we'll check online and see who'd like to speak. Let's just kind of have Matt come join us. He's not recused from this part of the discussion.
Mark, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Carla.
Can you please remind everybody in the room not to smoke, that there are no personal attacks allowed?
So what I can and will do is make it clear to everybody that we allow public comment to take place, although it is not a requirement, we elected to do that. Second, we do ask that people keep their comments to just two minutes and I will use a timer just to make sure we stay at that two minutes. Per recent decisions, although we certainly prefer no public, no, no personal attacks come through, we are not able to limit that. I think we're a community. We try to work together. We all live in this community. It'd be great not to have personal attacks taking place. That's as far as we're allowed to go. So I'm just going to give one second for Matt to join. Is he on his way?
Yes, he, yes.
All right. It feels like it might be a few more minutes yet.
So, yeah, let me go double check.
Thank you.
That'll be it.
Great, thank you. Time for one more sec, folks. Did we lose Karen? Karen, you still there? Uh, we may have. Oh, there you are. You're back. So folks, we're just hanging on one more second to see if Matt Cornelis can join us as well. Hey, Matt.
Hi, hello.
Thanks for joining.
Thank you.
We are just about to start public comment, so I thought that would be good for you to join.
Yeah, sure. If there's, I might have to recuse myself from part of it, but if anything comes up regarding the town manager's search, but I will sit here for most of it. I've talked to the town council with this too, so.
Okay, so you will regulate that then? If you feel that's inappropriate, you'll...
Yes, I will, sorry. I will. I might have to step out.
So make sure there's a bee line available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I saw hands. I saw Genna. I saw Linda. I saw John. Why don't we start with that? So again, if you could please come to the podium, introduce yourself, give me just one second to set devices and things. But I think we'll, I think we should be fine. Sorry, we're set for six hours and fifty-nine minutes and that won't work. Okay, fire away, please.
Sure. Thanks. Genna Pilowski, three Harriman Avenue. Um, three items really quickly. So at the past meeting, I've recommended that folks refrain from making speculations or assertions with regards to Jackie McCarthy stepping aside. I don't believe it's appropriate. Now, there was a decision made by Christopher Haley to go on a rant for about ten minutes during a critical town manager hiring process. There's channels, there's appropriate ways of doing this, and that wasn't it. It was not helpful to the community as a whole. So what I said kindly last time, I'm going to try to reiterate again and be a little bit more direct. I don't think it's appropriate to keep using Jackie McCarthy as a political prop during your campaign. Now, the second point I wanted to touch upon is, Mark, I don't know what happened, I still don't know what happened. But I know that you've been volunteering for twenty years and I appreciate that. The town appreciates that. Hopefully, whatever occurred can be resolved properly. Third quick comment is that we have CPA coming up and that's a great opportunity for all of the residents to vote on some, on this effort that would allow us to collect additional funds from the state. The goal of the select board, I believe, is not to gatekeep, but to set up a committee for different residents to participate and figure out how to get CPA onto the ballot so that the rest of the residents can make an informed decision on that topic. So I strongly advocate for you folks to set up a committee on CPA. I know there's plenty of volunteers that would be interested in contributing their time to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Yana. Linda, you are next. Sorry, my timing was not working. I'm going to reset it to work. Sorry, hang on just one sec, please. Sorry. Sorry, just one second. It's like I'm set up here. Okay, fire away, please.
Linda Snow Doxer, Beaver Road, Redding. Thanks for this chance to share my thoughts. Volunteering in this town has changed. I've been volunteering since we moved here in nineteen ninety-seven. It was fulfilling, fun, and educational to do what I could do to help our community. Then I spent six years on the school committee and was chair of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. It is crystal clear to me now why potential volunteers are reluctant to step forward to give their time and expertise. All they need to do is watch the February twenty-first select board meeting, remember the recalls, and read social media. People notice how poorly volunteers are treated. I will use my own experiences as examples. I have been accosted on the street, in the newspaper, and on social media. I have been gaslit, undermined, and personally threatened. I've been demeaned, lied to, heckled, and called out because of my religion. Recently, I received a call literally screaming at me because I did not thank her husband by name in a letter to the editor. Did not matter that I had not mentioned other volunteers by name. In Reading, we have seen families literally torn apart by the animosity directed at volunteers. I ask, why would anyone want to volunteer in this town? My answer is that I volunteer because of the amazing people that I have met and worked with. And because I believe that without the time, skills, and dedication of volunteers, democracy will not work. This is a country of the people, by the people, and for the people, as stated by Abraham Lincoln. Blindsiding, unfounded allegations, insinuations, and attacks of any kind do not belong in our town. What happened on February twenty-first should not happen to anyone, especially to those who are trying to lead with honor
Need you to actually wrap that up.
and spending twenty-plus hours each week during so, doing so. I ask all of the people in this room and beyond, how can we fix this? Is this how we should treat each other? I think we can do much better. Please join me in volunteering to change this tenor and bring back the trust and the joy. I know it's possible. It's up to us, the people. Thank you.
Good evening, John Arena, twenty-six Francis Drive. This is the second board meeting I've attended where this matter has been discussed. I can't, I have no details. And all of what's been discussed does need to be verified. But I am absolutely struck by how hard group seems to be working to not be interested in the subject matter. If what has been described has a centillon of truth in it, it demands that the board take it seriously and disposition it for what it is. Accusations are just that. But they, there's often, and in this case, there's been a representation that what's been said is true. It remains to be seen if that's the case. But this board does this town a great disservice by remaining uninterested in digging any further. As I said in my first meeting, there's something wrong here. I've heard these comments tonight for the first time. I arrived tonight to see what the second follow-up installment would be. The board's waiting to see what you do. And failure to act itself will tell us quite a bit. The way to restore harmony, the way to restore normalcy, and the way to restore civility is to identify when wrongs are done, ask for forgiveness, take corrective action and move forward. It is not invilifying members of the community and members and volunteers who voice their opinions and back them up with statements that claim to be true and ignore them. I have no idea what the board will do. But if it does nothing, we'll speak volumes.
Is there anyone online that would like to speak? Caitlin?
No one is raising their hand.
Okay, Tom, please.
Thank you, Mark. Tom Wise, South Street. Town meeting member, school committee member, but speaking on behalf of myself. I want to echo Mr. Arena's comments. I think it's critically important for the integrity of this board and for lack of a better way to say it, the integrity of this town, that you as a board take this seriously and somehow, some way to investigate it. I know people don't want to invade into Jackie's space necessarily, but Chris isn't the only one who's hearing these things. I'll just say that. There are many people around the town that are talking about this with similar stories that have no connection to each other. So there is a shred of evidence, a shred of truth here that needs to be investigated. It needs to be pulled on, and we need to understand what really happened. Jackie needs her privacy, I agree with that. But at the same time, if we become Chicago in Reading, then your wish is lost. Right? If you really want volunteers to be part of the process going forward, they need to know they can trust the community around them and that those volunteers will not be threatened going forward in any way, shape, or form. I'll finally say this, unfortunately, cannot be decided to leave, but for anybody to think that Mr. Haley's doing this as a political play is ludicrous. The easiest thing for him to do is to not cause any problems. The worst thing for him to do is to cause problems. That's the antithesis of what he should be doing in Reading for a campaign. So that supposition needs to stop and needs to stop now, and it doesn't help with everything on the public, in the public sphere as well. So I would encourage you as a board, as an individual that's on a board, as an individual that sits in that seat on that board, you need to do something to investigate this, to do it right, and figure out what really happened. Whether that's among you, I don't know, right? It could be among other people that are connected in some way, shape, or form to you. Somebody knew how people were voting, somebody, according to this claim, used that against her. Thank you.
So folks, I am happy to call on others. I really did ask in advance who would like to speak. And the hands that were raised were a few. So I will offer a little bit more time now, but please, next time, I ask people to sign in and do that. So. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Mark. Karen Janowski, thirty Azalea Circle. I'm a town meeting member as well. I do echo the last two comments from John and from Tom. I did speak with Jackie on Saturday, Jackie and Mark. There is, like Carlo said, something happened and it does need to be investigated. And I will just leave it at that. I did speak with Jackie and Mark. Thank you.
Sorry, I did see, so Carla? And then Alicia, I saw your hand as well.
Thank you, Mark.
One second, sorry, technological challenge. Okay, please.
Carla Nazaro, Lawrence Road. Town meeting member, school committee member, et cetera, volunteer. Linda, I hear what you're saying, that it's not easy to be a volunteer. It's not easy to feel the accusations, many false accusations. We know it's election time. We know what happens during election time. If people think that Chris has done this, I, I sit on a board, right? I know when you have to do things that are right and not things that are popular. Chris is doing what is right. We are volunteers, we have a job to do, and we need to do our jobs when you're volunteers. We can't use the excuse that I'm a volunteer, so in some respects that gives me a break from doing my job. If you can't do your job, then step down. But we're here to do a job. This board, I really encourage this board to do their job. We heard some words from Jackie that are really concerning to me. I want to know who's running our town. I want to know who's having input into our town. I'm concerned with information that has come to light of people knowing information that they shouldn't know on this board. Those people are involved now with the Political Action Committee in this town. Who's running our town? So these are real big concerns for me. I applaud Chris for what he has said and how he has taken this opportunity to bring things to light. People talk about shining the light in darkness. It's time for you, this board to shine this light and give the people of this town what they deserve, which is the truth, and some sort of investigation. And if you need to pull in the AG, if you need to pull in town council, then that's your job and you need to do your job. Thank you.
Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia Williams, Marla Lane, town meeting member. I, you know, when Jackie ran for select board, I actually really lobbied against her. I didn't want her, I didn't see what value she brought to the town. I thought it was a political stunt. I was pleasantly surprised that she brought a lot to the town, and I'm very sad she's not here. And I want to know, as a taxpayer and as a town meeting member, why is she not here? Why did she step down? She put in all the work for the town manager, and right before the vote, she stepped down. And from these comments that Chris read, which I hope those become part of the record of the packet, because I'd like to read them because he read them so fast, it's, it's very frustrating. I've personally been involved in scandal in this town with two select board members and a school committee member. So nothing surprises me. So I don't know who did what, but enough, enough. People are getting hurt, people are stepping down, like enough with the political games. And it always seems to be one circle that is playing the political games, and I'm very concerned. Carla reminded me that John Lippett knew about the town manager committee member withdrawing before the rest of the public. Why, why does he know that information? What, who, who is not trustworthy? You are the gatekeepers of the information in this town. And the wrong person having the wrong information at the wrong time that becomes public could be a very big problem for this town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Vanessa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vanessa Alvarado, Mount Vernon Street. There's been a lot of discussion about what happened, and there's been a lot of demands from those, from a handful of those in the audience who also happen to be Chris Haley supporters, demanding an investigation to know what happened. What I find interesting about this perspective is that two select board members, one who's now been on the board for two years, previously had not otherwise been involved, and another one who's been actively involved in the community, a respected finance committee member who served as chair for multiple years, actively involved in the schools, I think this is second or third time as chair of the select board and has otherwise been above rebuke for many, many years, who has stated that he has no idea what Mr. Haley is talking about. That his conscience is clear. And I find it really interesting that there are members who are saying that there is truth in something that one select board member is saying, but completely discounting the other. I think that's unfair. I think it is a political stunt, and I am truly sorry for Mr. Doxer and what he and his family are experiencing right now because that is a very unpleasant situation to be in. So, Mark, thank you for your service and thank you for everything you have done in this community. And I know the election is coming up, but it would be great if we could sort of bring down the temperature. And I don't even know if the select board has the authority to do an investigation into what you're asking. So, thank you very much.
Any other members that would like to speak? Anybody online? Caitlin that would like to speak?
Still no one raising their hand. No.
All right, we're gonna move forward with our agenda then. Next up, our select board liaison and town manager reports. Maybe we can take thirty seconds and just take a breath. That's my two minutes right there. Okay, liaison reports. Does anyone have a, a report since our, our last, I guess liaison reports, a week ago? Karen, please.
Thank you, Mark. Um, okay, so I had the opportunity to attend the senior community center session at the Pleasant Street Center earlier this week. I'm happy to report. So this is a daytime session. I know that we've had a number scheduled and there are more scheduled. But we can tell you that we get a full house of at least seventy-five residents. This was my first introduction to the architect that we have working on this project, and I'm happy to share that I found her to be very knowledgeable, lots of experience with similar projects in different communities. And I really appreciated her approach to responding to residents' questions. I found her to be open-minded. And so I look forward to working with her, and I'm just happy to, to share that I think it's wonderful that we seem to have gotten great designers on our two major projects. As far as the second major project, the Killam School building project, I just want to remind everyone in the community that this Thursday evening from five-thirty to seven, we will be discussing sustainability goals for this building and talking about what has been defined so far and looking for additional community input. And this will be hybrid and in-person at the high school library, again, starting at five-thirty. So if you contend, we'd love to see you. Um, well, so I've been appointed to the Mass Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee. This committee every year sends recommendations to the State House. And so today, we met to discuss state revenues, budget outlook, and municipal empowerment act. The good news is that the governor's budget includes a three percent increase in unrestricted government funds, the UGA funds. Then also great news is that the general revenues for now six or seven months are still coming in a bit lower than expected. The, I did follow up with a question about the federal ARPA funds at state level, and the answer I got from MMA is that they are pretty much expended or encumbered. There's a possibility that people won't be able to spend them fast enough and maybe some funds could come back, but but in terms of us looking for, you know, capital help from additional ARPA funds or operational help from additional ARPA funds, I think that is really not going to be a path for us. We did talk again about the municipal empowerment bill. I mentioned that after the MMA conference in January. So that is going to be focused on giving communities the opportunity to raise fees and taxes. You can increase your meals tax, you could potentially increase a hotel tax that applies, you could potentially increase excise taxes. They'll also be talking about provision with help from the Association of Assessors on a residential tax exception. But I guess the message here is, is that when we're talking about other agenda items tonight, where we look at opportunities to bring funds to Reading, I, I think it's important to be mindful of things slowing down at the state level. The faucet is turning off. So, and but I look forward to, we'll be meeting once monthly with this fiscal policy committee. So I look forward to bringing back more information to the select board, and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Carla, what do you think?
Nothing.
I think there's time. Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, Mark. I guess I'll bring it up when we come to the CPA agenda item, but everything Karen just said coupled with CPA just seems much for me. But that's all I got. It's only been ten days since the last meeting.
All right. So I just reiterate what Karen was saying also, there are a few more sessions coming up where there's an opportunity for the community to have some input into some of the designs being looked at for the senior center. I am not exactly sure of the dates. I was trying to get to the website really quickly, but I failed at that. Matt, maybe you know the next charrettes?
Yeah, so the, the one that's coming up Saturday.
Saturday, March two.
March second at eleven-thirty, right at the Pleasant Street Center. So I was gonna mention that, but we've mentioned it.
You, you got it in anyway, and that's all I have, so let me pass it to you, Matt.
Yeah, great. So that's happening, the Killam School, Karen covered that. That's Thursday to talk about sustainability goals. I plan to have the, the final budget to FinCom tomorrow. We're just going over a few of the finishing touches on it. It's pretty much done. Just wanted to make sure that it's consistent and, and I'll send the select board a copy of that as well. They'll start their meetings. They're actually meeting tomorrow night to discuss the school budget, but next week, we'll start with the townsite budget. As everybody knows probably or hope they know, that in-person voting has started this week. So we are open regular town hall hours this week to come and vote in town hall. And at extra, some, some extra hours on Friday, nine AM to two PM. On Friday, we'll be open for voting as well, so. One other thing I wanted to mention, kind of a nice thing that I like to see every few months, we have a new art display in town hall featuring local artists. That's right on the first floor, around the corner. This is our fourth installment, and a lot of the local artists put in a lot of hard work, not only creating the art, but also hanging it and sharing it with the public. It's, it's a nice thing, and I, and I hope to continue it to many more installments, but I just wanted to invite people to town hall to see that. And those are my updates. Everything else was covered.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Chris?
Thanks, Mark. So if I could ask Matt, just, so I sent you the email regarding Memorial Park, et cetera, with the pickleball court scenario thing. And so that's still slated to be March thirty-first, when all parks in Reading are going to be open?
Yeah, it's before the Recreation Committee, but they had closed it until spring. And usually spring means like April first or March thirty-first. I'll, I'll double check. I know, I think they have a meeting coming up before that time, and I'll see, but we had deferred to the Recreation Committee on that.
My only comment, I brought it up a couple of days ago, and now it's like sixty degrees out next week. It's going to be the same thing. I didn't expect the weather to be where it's at, like a month behind.
Yeah.
Because usually election time, it's like ten degrees out, no one wants to do anything.
Right.
But, yeah. But, yeah. So coupled with that, it's the same thing about the overnight parking ban. I know it's permanent, but if the police possibly could just see if maybe now's the time to waive it.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to the, the chief about that. I mean, we could still get storms at, at any time as you know, it's unpredictable weather. But, yeah, we could definitely look into the, I think we just do it out of, you know, safety reasons to, and so it's reliable, but I know that it's sixty degrees and there's no snow, so.
I know they waived it earlier last year.
Right.
I don't know what the time was.
I, I'll discuss that with the chief.
Thank you.
So Matt, can you come back to us at the next meeting with updates on those?
Yes, with updates, sure, yep.
That'd be great.
We'll do that, yep. And in the meantime, I'll let you know anyway. I don't wanna wait till the next meeting, but I'll send you an email, but I'll also update the public at that point, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay, let's roll on. Next agenda item for us is vote on setting a special election date for select board member vacancy. At our last kind of full meeting, we talked about the notion of when it would make sense to fill the vacancy to get a fifth member on the board. And we had some discussions, we got some updates, I think, from Laura in terms of costs associated with it. And we got to, Matt, are you getting a lar?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Just give us one second.
So we're talking about, please come join us. Special, special election date. So we talked, the board talked at our last meeting, I think, about kind of pros and cons of doing it in, in general, as well as any costs that, that were associated. Laura gave us an update in terms of what was going on. Maybe ask if, if any, any other updates in terms of, of that. And, and the other thing Laura mentioned to us was if we were to vote for it, I thought, I heard the ideal timing would be right after town meeting, maybe the first part of May.
So if you vote to hold the election today, the earliest you could do it is May first.
Sixty-four days.
So ideally, it would be to delay it until, uh, cause May first falls, I don't remember what day of the week it falls, but it's not on a Tuesday. Falls on a Wednesday. So the earliest you would be able to do it, if you're gonna hold it on a Tuesday, is May seventh. Ideally, would it, to wait at least one more week to go until the fourteenth so that we can have the two elections for the presidential primary and the local election that we have on March fifth and then also town meeting all certified. It'd give me an additional week to be able to certify that.
So, sorry, can you just say one, so the ideal date from your perspective would be?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. Okay, board members thoughts?
Thanks, Mark. I think we were all in agreement that last time, the, even though we all wanted to combine the election, this time around to save the ten grand, this time around it's, it's a different story. Where we'd have to wait till September fifteenth, Laura, something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I'm, I'm sorry. If you wanna combine it, it would be September third.
Okay, yeah. I mean, May to September, I, I think that it's good for this board to work together for the next sixty-four days or whatever, uh, until May. A, a lot of good is going to come from that. I think that this board has been working together regardless, but I think it's, it's even more so gonna be down that road. So, May fourteenth is fine with me, even though I would love to save the money, it's just too long.
Thanks. Carlo?
Yeah, I, um, I don't know, I. Yeah, it, it, it's gonna be hard to function, I shouldn't say should be hard. A board of five is always better, obviously. Even though now quorum can be a little bit challenging because even though it's four of us, we still need three of us. So, I, I did really like the idea of September to give us more time to work together. But May is okay. I, I, I really think the town deserves a board of five, but it also deserves, you know, us to move forward and really find out what happened. I'm gonna reiterate that we need to find out what happened. The town is not gonna trust us. And we can't just sweep this under the rug. It seems like that's what's happening. And I'm not gonna settle for that, so I'll support the fourteenth if Laura thinks she can pull it off. I have full faith in Laura and the staff. But we need to do an investigation and find out what happens if the town can trust us again. Thanks.
Erin?
Thanks. I, I, you know, I got lost there. We went from one agenda item to another. But let's get back to the special election. I think this community also deserves a full board and so that I'd like to proceed as soon as possible. We could talk at a later date about whether with in-person early voting and mail-in voting, a permanent fixture, whether we're gonna lose a town clerk for the cost of ten thousand dollars because it's too much to manage, but that's an agenda item for our future date. So I would love to get this special election scheduled as soon as possible and give the community back a full select board. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
May I?
Please.
So just a couple of things that I'd like to point out. One is that this position is only until April of twenty twenty-five. So whoever ends up filling this position, whether it be in May and September, is, will have to run again in April of twenty twenty-five. And toward the comment that Karen made, that, that, that statement came from me. This election has been what the hardest one I've run and I've done over thirty of them since I've been here. The idea is, is that with vote by mail, running double elections i- is impossible to do and to do, pull it off success, successfully without any kind of issues. We've mailed out almost ten thousand ballots and we're still not done yet. Some of them went out incorrectly because of the fact that we had to bring in volunteers to do it. Running a double election does save ten thousand dollars, but it's not fair to the voters and it's not fair to the office staff and it's not fair to the election staff and it's certainly not fair to the voters. I just wanted to make that. Sorry.
No, no worries. Thanks, thanks for sharing. I, I think that we owe to the community to do the election as soon as is practical, which sounds like May fourteenth. So I would strongly support that. We are supposed to be a board of five. And yes, we will be a board of four for, for a period of time and we will be working together and it's gonna need to be productive no matter what. But we're a board of five and they're supposed to be a board of five, so we should get there at our, our first possible time without creating an undue burden. So I think me fourteen sounds like that date. I would be strongly supportive of that. Any other comments, board members? Karen, do you have a motion?
Hang on. I have it open.
You have disappeared from our screen over here too, just so you know.
Okay, sorry. I am, um, not using my regular technology, so it's hard to keep three different things up. Okay. Moved to call a special election pursuant to GLC forty-one ten to fill a vacancy in the select board due to resignation of Jacqueline McCarthy for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? We're good. We will do everything roll call tonight. So Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark, yes. We are four zero. Thank you, folks. Next item, vote to appoint new volunteer appointment subcommittee members. So Jackie was a member of the VASC along with Chris, so we're, we're, we're down one, so that's a piece of the puzzle. The other piece of the puzzle is that I think what we've done by convention is to have people serve for two years. And we're basically at the two years, plus or minus a month. So I think the question the board should talk about is do we wanna appoint one member? Do we wanna appoint two? If we appoint one, well, let me take one step back. We do have a lot of committees waiting for people right now, some of whom have shared letters with us indicating the urgency of us taking some action. So I don't think we should wait. I think we should form the committee and, and get it going pronto and, and have a meeting pronto to get that done. So I think the question before us is do we appoint one member to join Chris or do we kind of take this opportunity and appoint two members? And if I can, maybe I'll, as long as I'm speaking, maybe I'll just keep going for one second. You know, I think one of the things we just talked about is we all, we all need to work together to get this done. By the same token, oftentimes we reflect two, two different sets of, of opinions. And I think we should celebrate that by making sure that we select one, one per, one person who kind of is, is thinking things on one side and another person who sometimes is thinking on the other side. And maybe that's the best way to make this work in terms of, of a board. So that's my thoughts and I open up to other members who'd like to speak. Chris?
Thank you, Mark. I believe I said the exact same thing on the, the, the chair vote with, with Jackie and whatnot is, is representing the, the two viewpoints that don't exist in town that, that does exist in town. But I completely agree with you that, that it should be either Carlo and Karen, Carlo and you. It's not in the best interest of the process or whatever for me to continue with this, with the election looming. It's not fair. So I'm happy to pass it off. I enjoyed the, the two years that I had. And, yeah, you can't do two consecutive years. Next year hypothetically, I could do it after one of you two, et cetera, did it, but I know, it, it's been a great process. You really do get to, you know, the first year that Jackie and I did it, not interviewing people and then hearing the feedback that we should probably be doing everybody, subsequently changing it to that. I mean, you really, even though it's five, ten-minute Zoom interviews with people, you really get to know a lot of people in the community. And like the point that I made, it's very difficult to tell people no to serve on the committee. I know it's easier when it's, you have the, the free spots for it as opposed to you got three people for one position, that makes it more difficult, but it's, it's very rewarding to see that a lot of, majority of everyone that we spoke with is just super qualified to be doing, like to have somebody that deals with cemeteries and then appoint him to a cemetery committee is just wild. And we did that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with what you had proposed. I think that I'm good with either one of you doing it.
Carlo?
Well, I'd be happy to do it.
Great, and the, the structure is fine with you?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, I enjoyed doing it, even though it was during COVID. And I would love to do it where it's more in-person. I know we had some interviews in person. But, um, yeah, I, uh, I, I think we should have two without a doubt, you know, not one. It's ridiculous. But, yeah. I, I'll do it and with, with Mark or Karen, it doesn't matter.
Great, thank you. Karen?
Thanks, Mark. I don't really see the need to decide who should be the next two members for the next two years at this juncture. I was leaning towards we fill the empty spot until we have the special election that we just scheduled and then as a board of five, we decide who should be taking this task on for two years. I would be willing to serve. I, we were not consistent in our policy of two-year rotations and Carlo and I were on the VASC for just one year and then it flipped. And then finally, this last term was for two years. So, you know, as an aside, I'm not sure, I think two years might be too long for this committee and for some of the points that Chris made, you know, it's a great opportunity. It is work and it's a great opportunity to meet the wonderful volunteers that we have working for us. So I really don't see the need to completely upend our VASC committee at this point. Chris, you were doing a great job and we, I don't understand why you wouldn't just keep doing it. Or another option is we just agree that once the board is full, we take it up again. But it is really important. I had been hoping back since December that the VASC would find an opportunity to meet because some of these candidates and applicants and committees have been waiting for months at this point. So I agree. Actually, so here's another solution. In this unusual circumstance and with a list that we have provided in our packet, could the, could the select board just go ahead and fill these vacancies? Like, you know, that would be another option. This is a short term until we're a full board again and we, it's not, it's not a heavy lift.
Matt, do you have any idea?
I think there's room in all the committees for all the candidates.
If I under, if I understand what Karen's asking, could you sort of circumvent the VASC and just directly appoint? Is that the question?
Not circumvent. I wouldn't say circumvent. That sounds not so great.
Okay, sorry, sorry. I'm just trying to put words.
But I proposed another alternative that just occurred to me. Do we really need a VASC for this short period or can we just make a decision?
The VAS, the VASC is a select board policy. You can always waive one of your policies, so it's up to you. You could waive the VASC requirement and just directly appoint.
Are there a lot of candidates that we're talking about?
Well, I, I included the list in the packet, so.
I saw that. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so there, you know, there are, there are some. I mean, there's also associate members as well on certain boards that, you know, there's that new affordable housing trust fund that we have to appoint four members to. Board of Health is waiting for their two new members. I, I won't read the whole list. You can see it yourself, but there are, you know.
It's like twenty people.
Yeah.
Right, exactly.
It feels like a lot for us to, to do all at once. And I think VASC has worked really, really well in the past. I'm wondering if, you know, if, if two years is too long, maybe the board would entertain, you know, doing it for, for one year, but I don't think we should wait.
Thanks, Mark. The, the policy isn't, isn't two years. The policy is you can't serve more than two consecutive years. So I don't know why everyone's thinking that it's a two-year appointment. We, we got, Jackie and I got re-upped last year and reappointed to it. So it is.
Wait a second, let Chris finish.
It is only for, it, it is only for a year. And I think the catch with me in this scenario is the election's in a week. I don't wanna sit here and say that I'm gonna do it and I'm letting you know I'm not interviewing twenty-something people in a week. No one's gonna agree to that schedule. So do I think that perhaps it's good to put it off to the next meeting? Yes, but at the same time, people have been waiting forever. So I can understand that if Carlo and Karen can meet tomorrow to interview people, go right ahead. I would advise against, like I said, Jackie and I made the mistake the first year, not interviewing people and just doing exactly what was proposed and we got blowback from it and, and we came to the consensus, we're not doing that again. You guys can do whatever you want, but that's the feedback that happened. And more importantly, the, uh, the appointment to the Board of Health has two spots with three people applied, so we can't just, you have to interview people on that alone. The other ones, it looks as if maybe it's almost a formality per se, but the formality got us interrupted. So I would caution against all of that. One year, you wanna do it next meeting, that's fine, but I'm ready to let Carlo and Karen or you and Carlo, whatever.
Thanks, Karen.
I, I definitely wanted to be on the VASC a year ago and we can roll tape because our policy, and perhaps this also says it's time for the policy to be more clear, I was explicitly told that it was a two-year period. But when I first served with Carlo, we were under the impression it was a one-year period. So I see we have a difference of opinion here, but I absolutely wanted to serve a year ago and was told, no, the policy's two years. So, so that's where my question is coming from and that was my first two years' experience on the board. We rotated every year.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead. That's it.
Can I suggest that, so I, I don't think we should wait. I think we should move ahead now. I think we should appoint two new people to it. I, I would be happy to not make Karen and Carlo directly to be the ones who do that or, or Karen, you can't. I would prefer you do it, but get it done. And, you know, why don't we just say, you know, it is our policy. I, I think I remember, Carla, didn't you and I do it for two years? And then it shifted to, to Jackie and Chris? That's what I remembered, you know?
So, so what didn't, what should have happened is that someone should have said, Karen, you can't leave the VASC yet because your term is for two years. Like, it, it, we weren't consistent.
Yeah.
Mark, thanks, Mark. The, the term is not for two years. It's you cannot serve more than two consecutive years. That is exactly what it is. So the, last time that Jackie and I got re-upped and Karen said she wanted to do it, we could have appointed her, but you appointed Jackie and I again. It's one-year term. That is it. Because what if hypo, like hypothetically, the election's tomorrow, Mark, you're up. You don't get reelected and you were already on for one, like that doesn't work out like that. It's not, you know, it's not two years. It's one. With no more than two consecutive, which means appoint Karen and, and Carlo now and then next year I am eligible whether, if the board decides to go that route, but more likely than not, it's happened before. It's, they might wanna continue. But it's one year and that's it.
Can I make a suggestion that we as a group, um, make this a one-year appointment for now? We elect two new members and we encourage the, those folks to get meetings scheduled as quickly as they can, perhaps in time for our next meeting. Uh, and if not, certainly for the one that follows, so we can get these volunteers onto the boards. The boards are, are pleading with us to do it. We need to get it done. In fact, I know one of them said to us, they don't wanna have another meeting without another member. And it's a select board appointee that, that's through VAS. So I would strongly encourage us to, to, if we can, agree one year, nominate the two members and do it.
Mark?
Karen?
I'm happy to, I, I'm happy to step in now and take on this amount of work that has been pending since December. Happy to do that. I appreciate the offer for one year. Um, I, I would like, I'll propose a future agenda when we just take a look at this policy item. I would also share with the board, if you haven't had a chance to, um, look closely, is that Matt, you can correct me. Your list of affordable housing trust candidates, we don't have enough. So we're gonna need to make an effort to attract candidates. So should we do post that? And give it two weeks or plan that, we, it's gonna take us a couple of weeks to get these volunteers scheduled anyway. I would like to make sure that we are able to meet with a, a, a good amount of affordable housing trust candidates.
Yeah, and, and I believe, I mean, it's a new, it's brand new because of the legislation that just passed. I believe we posted it and, and it's been outposted, but um, we, you may wanna give it a little more time because it's so new, you know, to get interested candidates, uh, in that, in that one. The rest of them, the Board of Health is, those are their new members. That's been talked about for a while and others are just regular vacancies, so.
So should we, I guess two things. One, can we come to a, a conclusion that we will appoint two people for a year? Um, we'll ask them to, to work at, at, you know, full speed. The other thing could be to suggest it for the Affordable Housing Trust. Well, let's even take one step back. Volunteers, we're encouraging you to apply, please. And the sooner you do it, the sooner the opportunity potentially to get onto the boards. It would be great if folks would, would do that. We know that the Affordable Housing Trust in particular is brand new.
Right.
Would love to get a variety of people to, to wanna participate in that, of, of different backgrounds. Please do so. Maybe what can happen is the VAS can look at the candidates and either, at that point, recommend moving forward or waiting. And then the full board will have the opportunity to do the same thing. Chris?
Thanks, Mark. Um, and just for clarification on the delay since December, it's more January? And the issue with that was the Board of Health having to get advertised for fourteen days and having um, town council look into the requirements that have to get done with it. There was a whole backstory there. Uh, and then, as you know, Jackie, February sixth, uh, I believe that was the date. So like, that, that's the delay. Holidays plus the advertisements specifically on the Board of Health. As far as everything else is concerned, the only other item I knew about was the retirement board that we just got, something in the, uh, some email like in the last couple of days ago. For all these other committees, I had zero clue. Any applications were submitted on it. Nothing, nothing has ever been sent to me regarding any of these other ones. The Rec Committee having a, a vacancy and an app received. I didn't even know there was an opening on the Rec Committee. Cause we had, I believe, when we reappointed everyone on the, when we did the appointments on the Rec Committee, this past appointment period, we had the full amount. So I don't know if someone stepped down. I could be making that up, but I, I had no clue about any of that.
It, it keeps moving. I know that the, um, Trust Fund Commissioners, for example, I talked about that, uh, back in December, uh, as a, as a need. But bottom line, we can impact it now. I suggest we do. So, uh, are we okay to, to, Karen, do you have a motion to appoint? So I'm sorry, we gotta go through a nomination process is what we should do first, right? So I'm gonna do that. Chris, go ahead.
I will nominate Karen to the VAS.
Is there a second? Second. I will nominate Carlo to the VAS. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. So we have two nominees. Why don't we vote on the nominees? Do we do them as a package?
Sure.
Let's see if you can nominate as a package. Okay, so the package is Carlo and Karen to serve as, uh, members on the VAS. We'll do a roll call vote. Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Mark, yes. Excellent. All right, on to the next, I think, right? Anything else on that one? Good. All right, that's VAS. Next, Discussion and Vote on Community Preservation Act Study Committee. So, um, Matt, actually, why don't you take this one?
Yeah, sure. So I, I sent an email on this, um, and this was something that, that Fidel was working on with Ben and Jackie, um, McCarthy and obviously nobody's, they're not here right, right now. So, so I picked it up a little bit. So, um, I, I think there was a discussion back in November. Ben, uh, Cares came to you and, and gave a good presentation on the community, the community develop, uh, Community Preservation Act and what it entailed. And we had it on a future agenda to talk about constituting a study committee. And there's no real rules or requirements and I did talk to town council about it as well. Um, Ben recommended that it be no more than nine members. That's what he'd seen in other places. And you could either open it up to all residents, whoever you want, as long as they're Reading resident, could serve sort of at large. Or you can designate certain committees, say the Historic Committee will not, will have a designee, the Select Board will have a designee. You could do it any way you really want to. So I guess it's really a policy decision for the board to decide um, what that committee is gonna look like and, and how to constitute it. Um, I did put together a draft motion that Karen has, um, you know, left the number blank, so it's whatever you decide. You could decide to have five members. We only asked that you have, you know, obviously an unequal member in case quorum issues. So, um,
Well, there is.
Right, so, and you know, I, I attached the materials from Ben. Um, I got some updated information from Victor, the assessor, as a, you know, what the assessment might be because Ben's numbers were some time ago now. Um, and so we'd just be looking for the board to discuss it and hopefully constitute a committee. Um, you, you could, if, if you wanted to do the members at large, um, you could go through the VAS. You could prob- you could waive the VAS if you wanted to. Ad-hoc committees, I'm not sure you may, you may know better than I how you constituted those committees before. If you went through the VAS for ad-hoc committees, I don't, I don't think so, but.
So I think what we did is if we designated, um, kind of an ex officio member of a group, let's say REC, just to make it easy.
Right, yeah.
Then we would ask the Rec Committee to vote on a candidate to, uh, to put into that ex officio role. That's what I remember.
Okay. Right.
And, um, I think when we had residents, I'm actually struggling to remember exactly what we did. I don't think it went through VAS. I think the board interviewed candidates for that, is my recollection.
And, and we'd have to post it for fifteen days with the charter. So that part we can't.
Fifteen days, right.
I think you're right, Mark. I think you're right.
Yeah.
Right, so that part we can't really waive on, so.
Yeah, no, you have to wait, don't credit fifteen days. So, um, so folks, there, you know, obviously there's a lot of discussion on CPA.
Right.
Um, there are a lot of communities and, you know, Ben had, had done, and Andrew had done a really nice presentation in terms of what's going on.
Yeah, sure.
I think it's something that we should explore and I think the point of a study committee is to do that. And if we bring in kind of the right group of folks to talk about that and then come back to us with a recommendation, I think that puts us in a position to, to make a decision and, and bring it forward. It would require, so it's gotta go through town meeting and.
Yeah, it's, if, if you want, if, to, to enact it, it has to go through town meeting and it has to go through an election. And I think the requirement is it needs to be sixty days between the town meeting and whatever election. So, I mean, it, it puts us, it's, it's a tight timeframe if we wanted to get this done for November, uh, election, that's for sure. But, uh, the, the start would be have the committee constituted, see what they say, have them take input. Maybe they could work very quickly. Um, maybe they'd ask more time, but I really think a study committee is probably the way to go at this point.
Board members' thoughts? Chris?
Thanks, Mark. I know I had mentioned Karen mentioning all the other fees, taxes, etcetera, uh, going forward. Um, and I'm very mindful that, uh, because we're a board of four, um, hypothetically, depending on how other people would vote, I, I could see that this not actually passing us. Um, but I understand that it's bigger than the board. It's, it's up to the committee and then it's up for the voters. So I do not, even though I am against CPA, without hearing more from the committee and the, and the findings just on its, on the surface alone, even though I'm against that, um, I would still be comfortable with voting for a committee to explore it because I don't feel as if I should be blocking something that is truly up to the voters, even though I could do it right now hypothetically. But just saying that, I just want the public to be aware and that's why I asked Matt the, the question to run the numbers for CPA, so just so everybody knows. Um, because I, I, I've seen some low figures posted on what CPA really is gonna add to the tax bill. So I would just um, like to go over that briefly real quick and then I am fine with voting more, uh, on the committee stuff. So, based off the average single-family value, Matt sent this to all of us, but I'll just make it so the public knows. The average single-family value of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, which has gone up since last year. Uh, the tax rate eleven seventy-two, the tax bill ten thousand six, ten thousand and sixty-seven dollars. So at CPA one percent, that adds a hundred and six, a hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents to the tax bill. Um, at one and a half percent, it's one fifty-one oh one. Two percent, it's two oh one thirty-five. Two and a half, it's two fifty-one sixty-nine. And the maximum three percent is three oh two oh two. Um, and once again, I don't know the ramifications with CPA, but I believe we only get the max return that we would be eligible for if we pick the maximum number of three percent. I could be wrong, but I believe that is how CPA specifically works. Anyone who goes to the three gets more of a pie and then everyone else falls in line. So if we did two nine, you lose. You gotta go to three. So as long as the public's aware of those figures that can obviously change and we can put in other, not fail safes in there, you can omit the first hundred thousand dollars, you can make certain things exempt. I understand that. But right out of the gate, this is what we're dealing with and I am fine with having a committee to explore it and, um, inform the public more that, you know, they might vote for it and it is what it is, but it's up to them, not me.
Thanks, Chris. Karen?
Thank you. Um, as I mentioned, the faucets are turning off at the state. Um, CPA, every single year I've attended the Mass Municipal Association and asked communities about whether they are happy or, or not with the CPA. All of the communities that have CPA are very happy. It helps them avoid overrides. It helps them avoid having to potentially implement other tax options and that's what I was reporting on earlier. So, um, I would also be in favor of creating this committee. I think we still need to, um, I think the board could use the help. I think Chris made an attempt to kinda give a simple answer to a complicated question and I don't think that's the way we're gonna do it the best job we can. And, and for that reason, I would very much like to create a CPA committee, um, to work closely with staff and really make sure that we do a good job of evaluating our options, bringing it back to the select board and, um, taking the appropriate steps after that. I've seen communities like Milton, um, do a really nice job. And, um, again, they're one of the communities that has been very happy with all of the funding they've got for historical buildings like the Pleasant Street Center, like Town Hall, like our library. Um, there's just, there are just so many good reasons to, um, go and create this committee at this time and prepare to, um, present it to the voters in November. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Carlo?
Thanks, um. I, I guess if, if anybody knows the answer to this definitively, I'd like to know, I'd like to hear it. Since the faucet's being turned off or slowed down according to Karen, can the state do anything they want with CPA funds? Or is it legislated that it's only used for the towns that are, are participating in it? I don't know if anyone has any answers to that.
I, I believe that can only be used for the towns that participate in it and it is being funded currently, at least largely by the fee on deeds, uh, any, any, any real estate transactions, those deeds, those fees. That was kind of how this, this was funded. But if you are not a CPA community, you can't touch those funds.
Yes. No, 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 I, I know that, but I think I was already talking to the state. Needs money. They either create a tax, um, like they want us cities and towns to do, oh, let's just, you know, raise the excise tax and meals tax, yay. Or they'll, you know, use stuff from a general fund and move it to a general fund, but I, I think the CPA is real. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not, but I, you know, I don't, I would never vote to raise someone taxes, but again, like Chris said, it's not up to me. Um, I, I, I think it's a benefit to a lot of communities and towns and so I'm not gonna say it's not a benefit to Reading. Obviously, especially for the uses, uh, that we can use the funds for. So, you know, I'm in favor of a committee than, you know, when I vote as a resident, that'll be a separate matter, but, um, I, I think that makes sense.
Awesome, thanks. So, um, so great. I think that what, what we're hearing is.
That there are some questions that we'd like to have answered and I think that's exactly what this committee, uh, would be there for. Is, is to get some of these answers, bring them back to the community. You know, for example, Chris brought up the, um, you know, the, the higher rates that, that Matt brought in. Um, as was recommended by, by Ben, you know, there wouldn't be this hundred thousand dollar exclusion. Um, so rather than it being over a hundred dollars, it's actually eighty-eight dollars. And the whole point of this is that you get back more than your dollar. And even in the leaner years, it's like twenty-plus percent, even if you're not at the three percent max, cause most communities aren't at the three percent max. So I think rather than us kind of debating what's, what's what here, let's have a committee, um, formed, an ad hoc committee that comes back to us, answers these questions, finds out what's going on as, as best they can, present that information to the community. And as you said, Chris, it's, it's up to them at that point to decide, does it, does it make sense or not? I think this is a great first step. I think that we should do it sooner than later, as in let's get it started tonight. And, and let's see what it looks like and let's see what the opportunity is versus literally the cost. And then, and then we as a board discuss it. Um, by the time it comes back to us, we should be a board of five. Um, and if it moves forward, we talk about the, the plan, getting it to, uh, to town meeting or in elections that follow. So it sounds to me like we're, we're kinda saying this thing makes sense. Um, how about the structure? So, uh, some stuff we shared, I know, you know, Ben had said nine. I'm okay with, with nine and odd number. We've had good luck with seven, not that we're going to Vegas or anything, but, um, you know, those two numbers seem to make sense. I just kinda, you know, sketched out just lightly, you know, if you had a select board member, a rec member, a historical commission member, an affordable housing member, a FinCon member and two residents, you'd be at seven. Could certainly make it nine or, or change that, but just maybe throw that out there as a straw man. How's that, how's that feel?
I like seven.
Chris?
Thanks, Mark. Um, I don't even think we have an Affordable Housing Person yet to even entertain.
Not in the trust, but we actually have an affordable, we have a, um, what's Catherine's?
Housing Authority?
Housing Authority Director?
Right, yes, yep.
So, uh, I think when Ben sent his original note, he suggested, uh, you know, Catherine.
She was, she was listed on there, right.
Who's the director of the Housing Authority currently? So not the trust. Now, I don't know, is she a resident? I'm ready. She's not.
She's the director. I don't know.
Okay, well, that makes that easy.
I mean, they could always be sort of ex officio by, by her position, you know, but it would be non-voting and, you know, I don't know if they.
Yeah, and, and VAS may be coming forward with, with a member, possibly.
Yeah.
I would, you know, maybe we, we see if that can work and, and if it's not, we, we kinda adapt.
I think this has to get started sooner rather than later though. It, we can't, like so much stuff has to get hashed out, deadlines have to get met for this to go on ballots, things like, like. We have to do something now to get that. I, who knows, maybe, uh, well, if we're putting out to all the various committees or whatever, that's gonna be easier than us just saying, let's find seven people. Because as you.
Yeah, I think it's really two. If we, if we do this notion of two, it's less as a resident.
Correct. I, I would just hope that, um, in the spirit of things, that equal voices would be represented. We don't wanna have an echo chamber of everyone saying, yay CPA. We need somebody that's also gonna push back and maybe not go three percent and advocate for two and a half. I just, we have to be cognizant that we can't just go all the way because who knows what comes of it. And then it might not pass because of it or it might pass. Who knows what comes of it and then it might not pass because of it or it might pass because we just, we have to be very careful with how we handle that. Because it is a, it is a big subject and it's a big hit uh to a lot of things and it can do a lot of good with things, but. We, something has to be. Put in place to not allow it to be nine oh right out of the gate votes. You uh seven oh or whatever, you know, Mark, you and I in ARPA, I still remember you sticking your hand up and you were the only one. On whatever item that was and you still did it. And that's what we need, is you doing something like that. Positive or negative?
I think um, I think that we have to post it for fifteen days anyway.
For for the citizen.
For the citizens, so that that's some time and obviously we didn't encourage people to if wanna come in.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I agree, starting it now is the is too late already, but we should start it now and get it rocking. And 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 you know, finding a way, so it would be great to find people who are willing to um to put in the work to figure it out. Um, you know, rather than jamming a poll on either side. How's that fit folks, what do you think? Karen, go ahead.
Um, Mark, can I?
Yep.
Um, the the points about um, you know, us needing to find affordable housing folks are are well taken, um.
Might I suggest, I like seven, as other people have mentioned, I think it's a good enough number and it's broad enough. Um, but how about would it would we have seven members with an option or or maybe an eighth member is our housing director? I don't think it's a bad thing to have an extra affordable housing voice on this committee and if we are down an affordable housing. Resident for the beginning, um, we still, you know, we're still well represented. I like seven in general, I am worried about the affordable housing voice to make sure we have a a broad spectrum.
I'm fine with that, so maybe we'd say that the uh, one of the slot would be a a uh someone from the Affordable Housing Trust, once that person is appointed. Um, and we'd allow the director of of. Housing, sorry, what are my right words, housing.
The Housing Authority.
Housing Authority. Housing Authority Director.
Director of the Ring Housing Authority, Catherine, go ahead.
I'm. Probably gonna have to abstain from the voting if it involves the Housing Authority specifically. Just so everyone's aware.
So if there were, if we were to suggesting appointing a member, then you'd have to abstain from that vote, that is.
Appoint you even discussing Katie for the most part.
Oh, okay, and that's professional, right, understood, okay.
Yes.
Um, I think it's a voice, well, affordable housing has to have a voice, that's one of the main avenues where this money could get used. So it'd be great to have someone from the Affordable Housing Trust, once we have such people. And I think we're saying we're gonna try to get them quickly and even as quickly as we can do VASK. So, um, I think the only issue would be that if we decided, hey, we're not quite ready for the trust member, I think we need a voice for affordable housing to be there somehow. And you you wouldn't have a Affordable Housing Trust wouldn't be a conflict, right? Cause that that's a a resident volunteer, right, kind of, okay.
No. Correct. Yep.
There was another name, I I don't wanna say names, cause I don't know who's been talked to, there was another name under affordable housing that Ben had mentioned in his email.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't know if that person is is a resident, if he's been spoken with or whatnot, but that could be another potential if we reach out to them, so.
Yeah. Yeah, do we know if that's a uh employee?
I don't, I don't know, I'm only seeing it on a list, I I was hoping maybe you knew who it was.
I don't know. Okay. No, unfortunately, I I don't.
Yeah, so, but it's something we'll we'll pursue though.
Other board members, do you know?
I I don't know what Matt's talking about.
Oh, okay, there's a there's a name, um, alright, so. How do we do this, so it it sounds like we we seven sounds good, um, does it make sense, select board, rec, historical, affordable housing trust. FinCom plus two residents.
Yeah, uh. And then the eighth is hypothetical potential, kind of, I I'm good with the seven. You can do the, I'll abstain from the rest.
Mark?
Yep, Karen.
Uh, open space, is an open space one of the major. Housing, affordable housing. Recreation, open space, are those the three items that must be funded every year?
I agree, the suggestions that Ben had was recreation, open space, historical commission, affordable housing and FinCom. I believe FinCom, it said fin- financial commission, I think you meant.
I think that it takes us to nine, cause there was, there's not a select board member on that.
Right, so so that was like you're saying, he he was suggesting nine and those are just some of the areas and the names. But those are just suggestions from Ben, you know, who's not who's not here, so you you can, you can form it any way you like, but he did.
Yeah. But Karen, you're spot on, the three big areas are open space, recreation and and historic actually, oh sorry, and housing, so it's four big areas.
Right.
Chris?
And and those can often leave are often residents, so I mean, I think we could still get to seven and have it be all residents, as as long as we make sure we hit those major areas.
Do we want conservation on this?
Well.
Chris?
I uh my comment to that Carlo is gonna be, we don't have an open space committee, so what are what are we appointing an open space person? I understand, you can tie it into conservation or something like, or trails, like Carlo's going, but we don't have an open space committee, so who are we appointing from the open space committee? We don't have.
I think Matt misspoke, or Ben misspoke.
On open space?
No, we don't have an open space committee.
No, he had recreation slash open space, he wasn't.
Oh, oh, slash.
Right, right, sorry about that.
You left a slash off.
Yeah, sorry I left the slash, yeah, he had recreation slash open space and historical, sorry if I misspoke, yeah.
Lara. Lara. Thank you.
Mark?
Karen.
Um, yeah, um, so content are great, suggesting Carlo, conservation, trails and um, who am I forgetting? All work well together?
Town Forest.
Four, thank you, Town Forest, as well as the uh Reading Open Land Trust.
Forest.
Why don't just one of these slots be four, somebody from those groups?
Land Trust Open Land.
If we do it one, we do one resident maybe instead of two?
And then which would be the additional, the would you do trails, Town Forest or Conservation?
Uh, I would leave it open, I mean, it could be, I would leave it open, it could be any of those. I, they work well together, they often work well together, that's my thought.
So how would we do that, we'd say instead of the those groups taking a vote to elect a member, we encourage individual members to apply for the resident position?
I I think that's the way we would need to do it.
We could do that.
Anything, Chris?
No, I'm I'm fine, I I, like I said, as long as all voices are are represented um one way or the other, then I'm fine. The seven of whoever's going.
So what if we did one select board, one rec, one historical, one affordable housing trust, one FinCom. Two residents with a preference for individuals that are serving or have served on trails, Town Forest or Conservation. How's that sound?
That's fine.
That work pretty fine?
Yeah, yeah.
Come with me.
Yeah.
Karen, can you?
Or historical, or historical.
But you got historical covered already, we've already covered historical.
Well, no. So are you saying we don't have a a designated person for open space, either trails, conservation, did I miss that? Or I thought you said we had a designated for all three areas?
I pulled back and moved that back into the residence and suggested that what we'd say to the the resident slots preference four.
We both got it. Okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, alright.
Can you, can you take Matt's motion and craft it to to sound like what I just said?
Let's get a shot. Oof, uh.
Would you like me to try, I so I can't, I don't know what your motion was.
I think we're gonna put something up on the monitor.
So if Caitlin, if you're there, could you, were you able to, would you be able to put the motion up on the monitor? And then maybe we could work from there.
Thank you very much, sure, one second.
Okay, thanks. Um, cause I kept it pretty broad and I ran some language by Evria, but um, could be whatever you need.
Do we need to draft the charge as well, but not real?
I had somewhat of a charge in there, but if you wanna draft a separate charge.
Let's see what you got, I I think we haven't, we haven't seen it.
Yeah, I I think Caitlin's putting it up.
Yeah, one second.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so CPA Study Committee is down the middle of the page, maybe you can scroll down a little Caitlin, or make it a little larger.
Yes, I can read it.
In a little, I need a little larger, thank you.
Yeah, so that that was the the basic language, I left the number out, but you can definitely say con- comprising comprised of and you can say. Whatever, one one member of the Recreation Committee, one member, you know, add that in. And then that was sort of the charge after that, you know, commu- communicate with community leaders, town administration. Local government groups, all that in order to um to bring recommendations back to the select board. And then if it's an ad hoc committee, usually there's a sunset provision, which that's when it would, you know, we we just chose a year from now. Could be sooner, could be later.
Read pretty well to me, Chris.
Hey, thanks Mark, I think the issue with that date is you want it on a presidential election, so.
Right, so so maybe bring it back to have it sunset in November?
Whatever the November election is, that's what you should have that thing sunset.
Makes the message clear.
Right. And that's, you know, that and that's not a requirement, that's a recommendation, you know, from a coalition, but it's been on different elections, but.
Yeah.
We would wanna shoot for the next big election, it should be the presidential, right, right.
Yeah.
Can always extend it if.
Yeah. When is the next election?
Why 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 expect it to be presidential, well, it's just a recommendation.
That's just a recommendation from the coalition, they they've seen them.
That's.
Oh, the turnout, the turnout?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
I think that's almost.
We protect success, right?
Yeah, success and participation, so. So that's the November election. November, it must be November fifth, maybe, November fifth.
Ugh, fucks me up, I don't got.
So, is it the, now I'm gonna go, I'm gonna think in the other direction for a second. One of the realities here is that if it turns out that it's it's going great guns, but isn't gonna be ready for November. Do we, you know, do we have to kind of get in the middle of it?
You're gonna.
What what if we instead, what if we left it in February, however, we said that the um. The goal is that they will present to the select board by, we could even take the dates that Ben had suggested. For the potential of.
But this is gonna have to go to. Town meeting first too, right?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna need a special town meeting to get it on for November.
Yeah. Yeah, so literally, we could, we could look at November and back up to the, actually, I think he did that, didn't he?
Um.
Yeah, I think it's May through October, so October, oh, sorry, it says. As suggested when we first saw it, special town meeting vote in June of twenty twenty four.
Yeah. Uh, so, if I think it has to be June of this year?
It was left. Yeah.
Yeah, not having, I think you'd have, you probably, you could push it later into the summer, the special town meeting during the summer is not ideal. But I think it it has to be sixty days between the town meeting vote and the election, so that's two months there, you know, in September, October, November, I mean. Cutting it a little close, but I mean, that's something the committee could look into and study and they may decide to have it on a different election, but.
Yeah. W- what if we targeted that they um, that they bring a a recommendation to the board, we could give them a date and make it clear that the. You know, one of the ideas we'd like to pursue is that it could be potentially brought to a town meeting. And take sixty days plus, there's the motion for reconsideration thing, right, two weeks?
Right, yeah.
So seventy five days before whenever the November election is. That would be the target date, or or whatever the Monday, Thursday, or whatever it's gonna be for a spec- potential special town meeting. So that that would be their goal and they can come back to us and say, yeah, we can do it or no, we can't. But it makes it clear that that's what we're we're asking them to do and then for them to tell us the reality. That work?
Yes, I think we need to be clear that this committee is being set up to target the November election and I like the way you're thinking about that, Mark, and um. I don't know how long this creation motion needs to be, but yeah, we should be clear.
Is November fifth the election, yes, it is, okay.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, even like the end of the year, just to make it easy, twelve thirty one, two thousand twenty four.
Yeah, so that I that puts us like in August, so right. Why use it as a starting point, it is what it is.
The, the November?
It's up to the people on the committee, right.
Yeah, yeah, we give a target and they can come back and say, yes, no.
They don't.
So, um, should we add that into the charge? That we want them coming back to the select board um with recommendations um. That could be consistent with a special town meeting in August. And townwide vote in November. Basically lay out the expectations and see if they can accomplish it or not, and they come back and say, great idea, but no.
No, all we can do is try.
Yeah.
And for October, November, um, interesting, okay.
I think we need, I think it's, you said sixty days?
Sixty days.
And then I think town meeting, I think has to sit for two weeks in case there's a motion for reconsideration.
Yeah, you wanna give yourself the.
I think you gotta go seventy five days.
We can hash that out with the committee and the town clerk, you know, and get the exact, the exact days, so.
Yep.
I I think the real thing that like, if we're gonna, they do, they should come back to us before then, but the target, the target date. Is a a warrant article, it's in front of. You know, or for eleven five, that that's, that's the goal, but I'm I'm okay with letting the committee come back to us and tell us how they're gonna get there. How they think we should get there.
Um. Not sure if we can do this, but I think we've done it before, have we done a motion where we kind of have the the core parameters set? And then um select one member to kind of finish it? Or do we just wanna hash it out right now, just be done with it?
I think we're almost done.
Okay, let's hash it out, let's go.
They're they're pretty close, they're pretty close.
Yeah, let's let's finish it, okay, so what we have to do here is um comprised of seven members to be appointed by the select board. Charge with facility committee, any questions on its charge? Other parts of it?
Well, I I read it, it was good.
Okay. So how we said, the committee will study the CPA, I'm at the last sentence, the committee will study the need for the CPA and the various methods for adoption and present its findings to the select board. In time.
Yeah.
To achieve. A townwide vote in the November election. Including. The timing for town meeting in advance of that. Working on the fly.
Including, I'm sorry, Mark, say that last part again.
Uh, a townwide vote in the November election, including um preparation for. A town meeting vote. That accommodates the November election date.
Special town meeting.
Special town meeting vote, thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, a special town meeting vote that accommodates. The November twenty twenty four election date.
I would just say November fifth, cause that's the.
Yeah, even better, we, cause that's a, that's a a known date.
Okay.
That is the presidential election.
Yeah.
Accommodates November fifth.
Yeah.
Election.
Do you still want the sunset at the end?
We have to have a sunset.
Okay.
So I would suggest, don't sunset it then, I would suggest. You know, just run it through your end, in case there's a follow up.
And yeah, just make it easy, twelve thirty one.
Yeah, in case there's a follow up.
Yeah.
Don't think there is, but what if we did that? Um, I think we'd also have to discuss here now the members, to just put that paragraph in. So but so right below extended, let's add a new paragraph. So this, so this is kind of a combination motion and charter?
It works.
Okay. Um. Ends ad hoc subcommittee, so is it, are those the right words? Is it ad hoc subcommittee, is it Committee Preservation Act?
It's an ad hoc committee, it's not a subcommittee.
It is an ad hoc, those are right words, okay, great. Um, members will be comprised of, um, one, two, three, four, five, five. Ex officio members. Um. Include, no, comprised of. And then, actually, if you don't comprised of, and then colon. And then I could drop down the line, what we're gonna do is we're gonna make a list, we're gonna say, you know, kind of one of each, a select board member, a recreation member. A historical commission member, so yeah, so, I I'm sorry, second is recreation. Third would be historical, is it historic commission or historical, historic.
Historical commission and I put slash historical district commission, just, it's the bigger pool, historical district commission as well.
Historic.
Yeah, historic district.
So neither or is fine.
But if we set them up this way, they, one group has to have a vote.
Yeah. Right.
So I think you can't do either or, it's 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 A or it's B. I would say just two.
Yes, what might you wanna do with the meat, right?
Say again, sorry?
What might you wanna do with the meat if we propose?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, yeah, which we, which won't fit the seven.
I. Even though the historic district commission are my uh home away from home people, I would say historical commission better fits CPA in general. Because it's the district on. Because it's, the district only deals with that district, historical deals with everything else.
Yep. Not all right, Karen?
It's fine, I'm just wanting to make, hopefully, we have a full committee, that's my key goal.
Yeah. Um, and the next one would be Affordable Housing Trust. Appreciating that we have to appoint some members. Uh, next was FinCom. Um, and then this one should be kind of a, not a bullet, but kind of a a hit a return and go below, it's a um and two residents who will apply directly to the select board with preference given for current or past members of current or past members of either Trails Committee, Town Forest Committee, or Conservation Committee.
Okay.
How's that sound, folks?
Yep, the um, we need to take out a subcommittee at the top, though, it's not a subcommittee, it's an ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee, right, can't be both. So Caitlin, if you can just scroll back up to the very first, yep, create a Community Preservation Act, ad hoc committee. Right, someone is to be appointed by the select board, charge of community, community leaders, town administration, town meeting members, select board.
Five, six, seven, oh, um, and then were we gonna have the um housing director as an ex officio or non-voting, how do we say that? Non-voting member?
So um, I'm trying to figure out, can we, could we vote on, can we vote on this and then take a vote to allow for another member that you could recuse yourself from? Not as a, is it non-voting?
I'm.
Well, if they're not a resident, it's non-voting.
Oh, right.
Like, like the non-able building, the the superintendent is a member, and so is the town manager, but neither are voting, right, but they are members.
I just, I don't wanna put you on the pickle.
Yeah. I I think.
But it's, okay.
Sorry, um, I think I'll just abstain on the whole thing, and it's gonna pass anyway, so I think it's easier and cleaner that way, so.
Chris, it's a better message for the community if you if you did participate.
Well, I I made it abundantly clear that I I wanted this committee absolutely, even though I would personally vote against the CPA itself.
Well.
Good, so let's add.
So I remember you changing your mind on the park committee a few times, so I'm gonna hold up hope that you're gonna keep open your mind, I'm sure you will.
Okay. Okay. Below, below the end too.
But it would be really great if all select board members voted on this. Is is there a real reason that you feel like you can't? This is just, you're just creating a committee, that's all.
I I cannot, I cannot get involved with anything with the housing authority at all.
Okay.
Um, so the question is, could we vote on this as is, and then could we um amend it?
We could, we could, let's do that, we're just, we're good.
Oh, we do that.
Yeah.
See what council says, if that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know, if, if, if.
I think everyone's joining.
She has? Could we?
Uh. Let's see, I let her in the room.
She was coming in for the um executive.
Yeah, for the truly, it was true.
She she left it, she was there and she left, but she's gone.
Hmm. You know, they can, these are any follow meetings, if if it sounds like Matt's on board, we can ask an employee to just detect, I mean.
So. Tell you what, can I ask that, um Caitlin, can you take what we have here, email it?
Mm-hmm.
Email it to town council.
Yes.
To Evria. Matt, you're reaching out anyway, right?
Yeah, I was gonna text her to come, come into the meeting if she's there.
Yeah, I think in any event, it'd be good for her to have this language right in front of her. And then she can tell us what's up or down.
Yeah.
And then I think our 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 question is, can we, can we vote for this as is, and I'll vote on it, and then could we amend it, and then with the amendment being the director of the housing authority as an ex officio member, um and then that would be a vote that you could abstain on.
Okay, I think everyone's joining again right now.
Oh, cool, okay, could you um send her this by email anyway, just so she has it right in front of her?
Yes.
Thank you. So is that's taking place, is there anything else? Are we, we're feeling pretty good about what's up there right now? Is that, yeah, all good? Carlo, anything else? Are you good on it?
Hmm.
All good.
I didn't sound like Carlo, oh, there. Okay.
We wanted a colon after five ex officio, ex officio members, doesn't matter, we have a semicolon there, but, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, so I but, yeah, it did, so word is telling us that the semicolon is wrong.
Yeah. So colon would be.
Yeah, I go full colon on that, right, five, yeah, let's see what that.
Yeah, if you can just make that a colon, Caitlin, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, loves it.
Yeah, that does it.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, plus two. Evria, are you on the Zoom now?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I just joined, I'm I'm catching up, um, the motion's been sent to me, I'm just reading it really quickly.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a specific question, or just is this permissible?
Yes. So uh, would it, so um, very specifically, this is the main motion that we're interested in. In addition, we would like to have an another ex officio member who would be the director of the Redding Housing Authority. However, with that motion, uh Chris would have to abstain. So what we're wondering is, could we approve this motion, all of us, vote on this motion, excuse me, vote on the motion. And then after that is done by all of us, could we then come back and offer an amendment that would add uh that additional ex officio person, Chris would have to recuse himself from that vote?
Um.
Or is there a cleaner way to do it?
The cleaner way to do it is for Chris to just unfortunately recuse himself from the first vote and just do it the way you wanna do it.
Without an amendment, but um especially bec- it, Chris, sorry, do you sit on the housing committee?
The, what what's the result?
No, I. I work for the housing authority.
You work for the housing authority? Yeah, uh Chris should just abstain from the first vote, and we should just do it the way we want it. Is that okay, or is there issues with that?
No, I think.
But I just wanted to make it clear that we're all, I, it sounds like from our discussion, everyone is in favor of this unquestionably, so if we add in that other ex officio member, it kind of removes Chris from the vote.
Yeah, um, to protect Chris, I would advise that um Chris abstained from the vote and that we just take one vote.
Can I still give during the discussion of the motion, am I able to still speak on the motion if the director is included in it?
But not vote.
But not vote.
You you work from that, I'm sorry, I don't know the ethics uh issue deeply enough, Chris.
Do you work for them in your private capacity then?
My company does the I D.
The security cameras, everything.
Yeah, um, I would just recuse yourself, Chris, I'm sorry.
That's, I, as long as everyone got the gist that I was good with how currently it looks on the screen. And um, you know, we all know, whether or not the minutes end up reflecting it, who knows, and what everyone else wants to say. But just I'm I'm in favor of the committee as it stands now, um, and I wish them the best.
Let the minutes reflect.
Let the minutes reflect.
Okay, so let's add to this on the, um, so now we have six ex officio members. Um, and and below FinCom, I think we can say, uh, director of the Redding Housing Authority, per ends non-voting. So right at the very bottom after Fin, so, sorry, where it says five ex officio members, let's make that six.
Okay.
And then uh you can add a bullet on the bottom, after FinCom member. So uh, director of Redding Housing Authority, per ends non-voting.
Is that the only non-voting member?
Yes.
So um, maybe a friendly amendment to say that the membership shall be comprised of five ex officio members, and then list the five there. You might even wanna say five ex officio voting members, and then two residents, and then underneath, in addition, the director of, I would put it at the end, I would, for quorum purposes, is your quorum going to be
Got it.
of the seven, or do you want your quorum to be of the eight?
Seven, I think, because we want the voting members.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah. And one non-voting member who shall not count towards quorum.
Um, and then we say here, one non-voting member shall be counted for quorum, who is the director of, is that right?
Yeah, and and I and I think, you know, we can't require these individuals to appoint, it's not a bylaw committee, so as a refi, you know, hopefully, and in our past practice, these boards and committees have agreed to participate in in ad hoc committees, um, but we can't direct them to appoint.
But we can ask them to.
Absolutely.
And so should we put that in there, that the selection of those five ex officio members um based on asking those committees to elect a member?
I don't think you need to put it into the.
Great, okay.
Into the doc.
Even better. So that the action that we would take if this motion passes would be to um ask Matt to communicate with all those groups, tell them here's the, here's the committee, and uh we would appreciate if you would vote and appoint him.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Karen, is this the motion that you're making?
There's a seven at the top.
Oops, where's the seven?
Oops, sorry, I was muted.
Oh, yep, thank you, sorry, we gotta fix it, it says comprised of seven members, so should it now say eight members? Um, actually, it should say seven voting members and one non-voting member.
Mm-hmm.
My dad was a lawyer. A good one. Great, okay, so Karen, is this the motion you'd like to make?
So move, please.
Is there a second? I will second it. We will take a roll, oh, so sorry, so for, I think you should recuse yourself here first, and then we'll take a vote.
Or you just abstain or recuse?
I think Chris, I think Chris has already refused himself, I don't think we need to take any further action, Mark, we can just move on.
Okay, great, thank you, okay, so roll call vote, let's go forward, so Carlo.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Mark, yes. So we are three zero, is that the right way to record it, Evria? And and one member.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. Um, next, votes close warrant for April town meeting.
Yes.
Matt, you wanna give us any updates first?
Yeah, they, the good news and and the interest of time too, is there's, there's no changes, we uh corrected a few typos, obviously, we took Jackie McCarthy off as a signing member, but it's substantially the same uh warrant draft that you saw when I previewed it a couple of weeks ago. Um, so I mean, we can go through it again, but there's no changes, so I think I'd be comfortable with you just voting on it.
So I don't, there may be a question on one item.
Okay, yeah, we'll.
Um, board members, would it be okay, do you want a quick run through? How do we wanna do this? What's the preference? Chris?
Thanks, uh, I almost said thanks Matt, thanks Mark, jeez, I don't screw up like this.
Mark.
Um, I think if there's, if there's no significant changes or anything materialistic from when we got the preview before, then I don't see us having the need to go through it now, especially with no quote unquote um real problematic or, you know, kind of votes, you know what I mean? I don't, at least I don't see it, who knows?
Carlo, would you be okay with that approach? So if there's something.
If there's something that you wanna highlight and talk about, that's fine, but rather than going.
Like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, I I I went over it, right, and I think you indicated that you wanna ask a question, or you wanna add, or like, it it, I'm okay with.
Yeah, I just, I want board members to have a chance, if you have a question on an item, to to bring it up, rather than Matt to go kinda walk us through one by one.
Right, right, no, I'm, I, if Matt, uh, is is, if Matt says it's true, then and and I, I write it to that packet, I'm I'm going to.
Well, Karen, is that approach okay with you too?
Um, yeah.
I'm sorry, Karen, is that approach okay with you?
You're breaking up, um, uh, I don't have any questions on this warrant, if it's substantially the same, I don't need a detailed blow by blow, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, so Karen, can you make a motion then, please?
Hmm, okay, hang on, here we go. Yeah. Um, move to close the annual town meeting warrant consisting of sixteen articles to to take place on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next, Chris, any discussion? No discussion, let's take a vote, as I see on the screen, Karen.
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark, yes, four zero, vote's closed.
Great, so I have it for you to sign, um, I can send it around now, how do we usually get signatures from members that aren't here? Do we have a?
Uh, this, the uh, yeah, I, yeah, and and the warrant often has the stamps.
A stamp? Okay.
I also can stamp this.
Yeah.
This one might need your wet signatures.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I I'll double check in the morning and send out an email, but um, I'm just thinking this one might need, might not be able to be used with a stamp.
So maybe, you know, you two can sign, isn't it?
Okay. Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we do that, and um, so for for Carlo, Karen, um, if you get a note that says, hey, wet stamp, if you can get in at your very first convenience, that would be great.
Sure, okay.
Cause I know that Laurel will wanna post it soon as she can, so.
Okay, uh, discuss future agendas. So let's go to the packages for a sec first, sorry. Um, okay, so if we go to, shoot, I had the wrong one opened, sorry. Packet page.
Twelve.
Sorry, I'm having slowness, thank you. Okay. So um, the next scheduled meeting is March twelfth. Um, we need to reorganize, we need to take a vote to reorganize after an election, so there is an election on March fifth, so this item after over meeting is board reorganization. Um, we had also um talked with the Bill Russell Committee, the Brace Committee um about this date, and I would suggest that we keep it on there for this date, um and allow that discussion to take place. Um, and and but we had a discussion before, there were some questions raised, I think they have some some feedback. Um, I believe they've spoken with many board members, I don't know, I'm not close enough to that to know all the answers, but this was the date they were um expecting to work with to move ahead, I would suggest that we we keep it there. Um, and then there's a class two, which is an automobile sales license, is that right, Matt?
Yes, yeah.
So there's an application there that the board would need to um review and approve as well, so those are the items that are formally there.
Can I have, there'll be an executive session, another litigation matter that will show up on on the next time we do this, but it's on, it's on for twelve.
Got it. Got it, thank you, so we'll have an exec session at the back too.
Right.
Other, other agenda items, folks want? Chris?
Thanks, Mark, could I just, so currently what we have on page twelve is all the agenda, all the agenda items, like there's really, I don't wanna say nothing, but there's nothing?
Uh, it's looking a bit sparse.
It does look, it looks like nothing, um.
It it never is, but that's what it looks like at the moment.
Yeah.
It generally fills up, you know, you know, as things come up.
Yeah, no, I I just remember before when we'd scroll, we'd have eighty five things on here, and now there's nothing but elections for the next six years, okay, that's what it looks like, it's a bunch of honor.
One thing that we've done.
Can I have a second?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Carlo.
Can we, um, I'll get confirmation, can we put a a space for a vote on the pollinator garden at Castine? Or or discuss, uh, discussion at least?
Okay. It it, from looking at Matt's face, I think you need to touch base with him on that.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I need some more information, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, Phil Perkins has been working with Chuck, and they.
Okay.
They met with the recognition committee already, and um, and it has to come back to us uh to uh move forward, the uh, the proponent, uh, was a Redding resident and a neighbor of Castine field wants to plant um as soon as possible, uh because this garden takes a few years uh to to get fully formed, so.
This is a discussed item.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have it.
And I'll.
Yeah.
And and I'll touch base with Chuck too, so get some more information.
Okay. Let's see what what's going on with that.
Just wanted to make sure that town staff was working.
Yep.
Thanks.
Um one other thing that um I thought would be a good idea, we used to have um the different department heads um come in, you know, once a year and kind of talk to the board, uh about, you know, what's going on, needs and things. This is after budget season, right, cause we finished with that. So maybe start putting those on, maybe you can put placeholders, doesn't have to be March twelfth obviously, but you can start putting some placeholders out for some different departments. Public safety, public health, um you know, different groups that we think would be great coming in. Anything else?
Uh I I I would like all of us to agree to put on the agenda that we need to investigate what happened. Uh because I think the town needs to know, uh no, I shouldn't say needs to know, the town needs us to investigate. And I I I I'm not hearing enough from everybody and I think to be open and transparent with everybody. We should all be on board with this uh to investigate and and put this to bed so we can move forward in a positive light.
So I would suggest that we talk to town council about what kind of what's possible and and how how things could happen. I don't know if investigate is an okay word or um I don't know what that is at all, I would suggest that that's a discussion with town council first, um or maybe we, it's on there, but it's not investigate, it's um I don't know what the right word is. I don't think it's investigate.
Okay, I I I'm open to whatever word.
Whatever we can use as long as we can talk about it.
If the board will leave it to me to talk with town council and and come back with something, you know what I'm saying?
Karen, you have a comment?
Yeah, uh along the same lines, I I don't know where in our purview it is to investigate people's personal reasons for resigning, so I I I I'm, I think it's fine now, like why why don't we speak with town council, I I this is just, I don't see this as board business and I actually don't see it helping us um get past the meeting of the seventeenth and being leaders for our community. But um I am fine with Mark talking to town council to see um, you know, where the line is, whether it makes sense, thank you.
Any other items? I think we're good, um approved meeting minutes. Anybody have a chance to look? So those came separately, right?
Yes, I sent them Monday morning, I'm sorry.
I took a quick look, I didn't have any changes, thanks Caitlin.
I'm sorry, I did not have a chance to look at it, but I would do it very quickly.
Can you put it up Caitlin, is that possible?
Yes, hold on one moment. Sorry, you have so many windows open.
I know, I feel your pain this evening.
Okay, there we go. Um Carlo did want me to note that the meeting um started at um
Little.
Call me, or so I'll put that in right here, at seven oh seven.
Okay, could you scroll down a little bit please? I'm good so far, any other comments?
I would joke and say, we all agreed to meet on Amanda's birthday, but I'm good with February thirteenth as presented.
Good so far, scroll down, please. Um could I just suggest on the post nineteen seventeen liquor license, could you just indicate that the applicant um was at the meeting, uh available to answer questions?
Sure.
Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Um, trying to think of his name real quick.
Maybe. Um.
Treds.
I got it, Jason Karen, Lucian Kelly.
Karen, that's right, Karen. Yeah, your relative was.
Treds husband, yeah.
Future, something like that. Great, okay. Damage report. I am good as written, or as amended, sorry, oh, sorry.
It's just the adjournment motion?
Any other comments folks? Okay, Karen, can you make a motion please?
Yeah, it's actually not a motion, can you just give me the date please?
I'm sorry, February sixth.
Move to approve the minutes of February sixth, two thousand twenty four as amended, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris, discussion. Let's take a vote, Karen?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Okay, Karen, do you have a motion to move to executive session?
I think I do. See. Move to enter into executive session under GLC thirty A twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to Davenport versus the town of Reading. As the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body to invite town council, the acting um town manager and the executive assistants of the select board and town manager's office into executive session to adjourn the meeting from executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Not appearing, we will take a roll call vote, Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark, yes, we are moving to executive session, thank you folks.